Come forward and give our invocation.
I would be delighted.
Thank you. Pastor Walworth will lead us in an invocation. Thank you for coming.
All right. Well, dear Father, as we gather here tonight in the comfort of this City Hall, Lord, we invite you into our presence. We thank you, God, for the liberty that we sense and that we feel in this great country, Lord. Sometimes we consider it's a mess, and yet, Lord, it's the best place to live in. Grant, Lord, your wisdom and your indulgence, Lord, in who we are and what we do, Father. We pray, God, that you would be with the City Council, in their deliberations and things that they might say anew, God, that may ultimately be for your honor and glory. We pray this in Christ's name.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We'll wait a couple more minutes. I wasn't aware that Barbara might work here. So give them a minute. Mike?
Good.
Good. How are you?
Very good. Start saying your name.
Megan, these are pretty flowers. Thank you for bringing those. Well, it is 7:00. So call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and liberative and just. Shirley, would you take roll copies? Take a breath.
My pillow.
Here.
Chair floor.
Here.
You need to help me.
Here.
I'm gonna remember.
Here.
Backboard. Steve Wallace.
Here.
Can you hear him?
Here. Thank you. Before we move into approval of the agenda, I just want to make sure that everyone listening or everyone here knows that we want to honor our city clerk, David Miller, who passed away on Sunday. And we will -- you didn't know? Oh, I'm sorry. We will talk later about perhaps a project of some type to honor her, to her memory. But I'd like us to, right now, just observe a minute of silence to honor her. So if you'll just bow your heads and join me in that. Thank you. There will be funeral service held at Watkins Brothers Funeral Home on Saturday at 1:00. That will be followed by a luncheon here at City Hall upstairs. There will be visitation with her family tomorrow, Friday, in the afternoon. I think that's 2:00 to 4:00, and then again at 6:00 to 8:00. We'll move on now then to approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per the --
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now into reading and approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was June 15.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the June 15, 2023. Regulate the second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Is anyone here to provide a pre-approved report or presentation? I don't think we have anybody for that. Is anyone here for public comment? Jim, did you come down to share a few words with us today? No public comment? Okay, all right.
I think the McQueen house is looking good.
Oh, good. That's good to hear.
The flowers.
Deanne says the McQueen house is looking good. Yes, looks very nice. Communication, Shirley? Do we have any communications?
Just the park. Summer park, the fun park.
Yep. Let me have that. Chad?
Yeah. Okay. So July 19th hosted here. It will be hosted by the Parks Committee on July 19th from the hours of 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a summer night fun. We're going to have lawn games and free activities. Everything's free except for the food truck. I do believe that's going to be here. Is that correct? Am I good? Okay. We are going to have sprinklers from the fire trucks that's going to be here also, too. So that's -- Sounds like we're getting a lot of participat --
Yeah.
Sorry. Participation from folks around town and companies. So hopefully, it turns out great with the community. We have a lot of folks that show up, families and stuff. Again, that is July 19th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Right here at City Hall.
Thank you. I have just a couple of reports. Just letting you know that all the department heads' evaluations have been completed. And I believe all the employee evaluations have been completed. The department heads that do those. One is a yes and one's maybe not so much. But the rest of them are done. The other thing is, we got a letter of commitment from SADA. Last year, we approved our spending with SADA for this year. And so that is all in place. And I think in your packet, you have a letter now from SADA just reminding us that what we're paying is less than what we committed to a year ago by $368.92. They have included with that letter an attached invoice. And this would be for our commitment of the 2024 fiscal year. So just so you're aware of all that, because it was approved previously, we don't have to have any resolution to approve that. And we don't need to do any resolution to approve the 2024 commitment. So it's just basically informational. But if you do have questions, I'd be glad to pass those on to Justin. Or if I can't answer them, I'd be glad to pass those on to Justin. Do we have any committee reports for tonight? None? Presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And now we'll back up to department heads because I skipped over them. That motion passes. So now we'll go back to department head reports. Who would like to go first? Megan?
Hello, everybody. Tax bills went out the last week in June. All taxpayers receive a tax bill, regardless of if you have your taxes paid through your escrow with your mortgage company. If you are a taxpayer that has escrow, there is a note on your bill if your mortgage company requests your bill from us. It's about halfway down on the left-hand side of your bill, it says a copy of this document has been requested by your mortgage company. So that can identify whether or not we have received that request. If you have any questions, definitely give me a call. I can definitely look up the status of whether or not a mortgage company did request your bill. Other than that, I'm just working toward closing the year that ended on June 30. So it's just time to start wrapping up and gearing up for the audit in the next. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel for Megan? Or any adderals or anything like that?
Definitely adderals.
All right.
Thanks.
Kevin, would you like to go next?
Sure. Over the last month, the Bancroft project wrapped. So we are out of Bancroft, no longer heating them with water operations. It took a little longer than they anticipated, but they got it done. And everything's back online over there. So we shouldn't have to worry about that anymore. The school project is underway. I've done with it now, but we had some minor issues over there with the gross construction. We're providing them water for their milling process. And we had some issues with dust control. And we weren't involved in the pre-construction meeting at all. John did some walkthroughs early on in their engineering process. They could have avoided some trouble if they would have included us in what they're doing over there. We got them straightened out. And they've changed the process that they're using and looping us in on that so that we can add our input into what they're doing and how they're doing it. So they're working with us rather well now. So that's a bonus. We're still working on large service line inventory and galvanized line replacements. That'll be ongoing probably from now until 2030. I just like to note on it because it does take a lot of time and manpower and equipment to do that process. So I think the paving project turned out really good. They did outstanding work. And they kept the project cost under budget. So we can get on that project. I thought that I had submitted the bill in for this round of payment, but I must have missed it in my getting ready to go on vacation. So that'll be on the next round of bills so you can see the cost there. We demoed back trucks. We've been shopping back trucks and looking at back trucks. And now that the new budget is here, we'll probably be bringing something to the council for approval at the next meeting is what I'm hoping for. I'm working on the engineering RFPs. Hope to have something the first of next month for you to see so we can go out for engineering work that we need done for the water reliability study, asset management, and the capital improvement plan. So other than that, that's all I have this time.
Anybody have questions or comments or adjectives? Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Shirley, do you have anything to bring? Kayon?
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Just briefly, I want to let you know that we have officially sworn in, hired, and trained the new part-time officer, Nate Kirby. Currently, he is a full-time deputy for Chilox County Sheriff's Office. And he's a resident here in Perry. And he's going to be looking some open gap shifts that we don't have coverage for. So I'm excited to have him on. And he's going to be -- Well, it's been a very smooth process because he's trained in a lot of the software platforms that we already -- that he already utilizes that we utilize here. So report writing, computer aided dispatch, a lot of those programs he's familiar with. E-crash, e-citations, he's already familiar with all those. So it's just a matter of me getting login and password form and all of that fun stuff. But he's good to go. So last couple of weeks, you may have seen a couple of officers riding together. We only do that when we're training somebody or there's a need. We don't do that on a regular basis. That would be the reason that you may have seen that. And flowing right into full-time officer, looking to start the process of advertising and putting out notices that we're going to be hiring a full-time officer. I actually started that today, but I'll work on that some more tomorrow and open up some application processes. And that's all I have. Folks, have anything for me?
Anybody?
All right.
Thanks, Kayon. I don't believe we have any old business. So on to new business. And that is a discussion slash resolution regarding the general services agreement with C-2-A-E. I believe you all have a copy of that in your packet headed Resolution to Approve Contract with C-2-A-E. The agreement is attached. And their representative is here. Do you want to give us a little rundown on this first? Or how would you like to do that?
Sure. So general service agreement. Usually, we have these with smaller communities. And what that equates to is like if you have a city attorney or your CPA, you have somebody you can call up and ask, you know, questions and get things done that aren't large projects. So you would still continue going out for RFPs, or RFQs for the larger projects. But if you need, you know, something like you're applying for a grant and you need a map that shows that's -- Those are the type of little things that occur over that. There are, you know, clients that we work with that under the general service agreement, at the end of the year, we don't charge them anything. But we, you know, have opportunities to, you know, work with them on the larger projects when the RFPs come out. And then, you know, other years, you know, you may have $10,000, $15,000 in fees for various different things. So there is no commitment that we've paid anything if there's nothing going on. It's just a convenient for small rural communities to have the advantage of having someone to, you know, talk to and say, hey, we're thinking about this. What, you have any ideas on this? And that's sort of a high level. We are a full-service architectural and engineering firm. So we can handle all the architectural stuff. So any type of building improvements that are needed as well as your traditional, you know, civil type work. Our staff is, you know, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire safety, landscape architects, and then, you know, transportation, water, wastewater. So we have a full gamut of disciplines and capabilities. And so there typically isn't too many situations that we get into that, you know, we can't provide some direction.
Any questions for Mike? I'm just going to read the body of the paragraph here. That might stimulate something. Whereas the city is in need of general engineering and architecture services, which may include, but not be limited to, grant applications, preliminary feasibility studies, preparation of design, cost estimates, construction-related field services, preparation of vid documents, inspection and site plan slash plat reviews. So those would be the general services that he's speaking to. Now, Kevin, John, I, and Larry met with representatives from C-2-A-E via Zoom to go over this when we knew that we were going to be losing our contract with our grant writer. He has gone on to accept a full-time position, although he's helping Megan finish up the one grant we have in the works. But he won't be there to help us anymore. So anyway, Kevin has also read this through. And I won't try to quote you verbatim, but you were pretty much okay with this, right, Kevin?
Yeah, I didn't see any replies on our end that were proposed for me before.
I did send it on to Justin, our attorney, for his review. And he said, I don't have any changes, any issues with any of it. So knowing now that and having had a few more minutes to sneak some peek at this, do you have any questions for Mike? Not your mic, but that mic.
What is your service? Because you said you had no fees if we don't call you and say, hey, do this. Is that correct? Did I hear you correct?
Yes, correct. So typical thing would be is, you know, communities say, hey, we're going to go out and apply for a grant. And our grant writer is going to do this. We need some maps. Can you get us the maps? And then we'll do the maps. Or can you give us a cost opinion on what this is going to cost? And we'll give them, you get the cost opinion. So, you know, typically, these are type of projects that are going to be much less than $5,000, typically in that, you know, less than $1,000 most of the time. And then, you know, the bigger projects that's when you get into the more formal RFPs and do it the way traditionally I've done it for the years. So it's just a nice, convenient convenience for smaller communities that give them support so they don't necessarily have to go, how are we going to get this?
We don't pay any money for C-2-A-E to be our company of record. And Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, but many of the grants we've looked at have wanted to know if we have a company, an engineering company contract or agreement.
Yeah, there's a big grant that we tried for that required an engineer on contract kind of overseas.
And you fulfill that, but that's a different contract than what we're talking about here.
So a lot of the communities were both, where they're architect, engineer of record, as well as we have a general service agreement.
So would you, if sort of Parks Committee has thrown out the idea and talked and did a little research about using the old interurban, which consumer zones, this easement or whatever it's called, and they need an engineer? Is that something that you would do then? Survey it out and say, you can go here and the power lines are there and you're so many feet away. Is that a service?
Yes.
That would provide?
Yes, we can provide those type of services. And then for like the grants, we can do, you know, conceptual designs that typically are part of the grants medals when you're looking at the parks and stuff like that. You know, it doesn't normally go to bid documents, construction documents. It's more, hey, let's apply for these grants. Here's a sort of schematic of what we're thinking about. Then, once you get to the stage that you want to go for the construction documents, then you can go through a traditional RFP request and get quotes from multiple firms if you so choose.
And if we did that route, would you review those other? I guess, I don't know how to ask that question.
So typically, you know, we would like to bid on those as well, provide those services. But again, what we have in front of you right now is just for the general service agreement. It's not necessarily for the engineer of record. If you're interested in that, that's a different contract.
Okay. And that has a, does that have a base fee to it? Or is that a --
No, not typical. The benefit of having an architect of engineer of record is just the example we showed there. There are some grants that say, do you have an engineer of record? And with all the money that's going through at the federal level, we've had some communities say, yeah, we want to do that so we can react to these opportunities as they come out. But there are a lot of federal and state procurement bureaucracy that you make sure that you addressed when you hire that. And typically, under those contracts, you know, you would hire the firm for three years with the ability to extend it a year, twice, five years. And then you go back out for -- And those, you go out for what they call qualification because you're not talking about a specific project. You may say, hey, we need a firm that can do roads, water, parks, you know, buildings, and have all these requirements. All the firms would submit their qualifications. And you would review it, have a scoring system already set up, and then swipe that firm that scores. That firm, that score is published.
And we, Zoom conference at SUSE spoke. We had some very preliminary conversation about potentially engaging Perry Township. We've had the water project that's been an ongoing, ongoing activity. That we may have a follow-up with C-2A-E relative to that project in conjunction with Perry Township folks. They weren't available that day for the Zoom conference. So that might be another tool that we could, that we'd utilize their service for, like Bigger School.
Yeah, the, the meeting also that we had with the office that reviews the applications for those big grants, those legislative grants. When we met with them, they pretty much said you needed more guts to your application. You didn't have much in the way of engineering information. You didn't have architectural information. You didn't have, you know, this type of a company, you know, stating that they were a part of this. And that really hurt you as far as points. So that's why we even looked at this. Because they said, if you're, if you're gonna apply again, please make sure you get that kind of company of record reviewing stuff. And they're gonna give a more professional presentation for a grant of seven point five million dollars. So that's what led us to meet with them and talk with them. And we understood that this agreement, there's no upfront cost to it. That if we do get to the point where there's a specific project that we do want them to give us a bid on, then they can do that. Everybody else can do that. We open that up. But as far as being an engineer of record, that's all this agreement boils down to, if I'm not making that too many.
So, yeah, so that's, that's different terminology. So we're not truly, we're just providing you engineering opinion on the, on the project that you're looking at. And, you know, a lot of our communities, they, to make it a little bit more formal, they will establish limits. So if anything is gonna cost more than five thousand dollars, it goes out for a formal RFP. If it's under five thousand dollars, it will fall under this contract. And then you can actually establish an annual limit too. So you can't exceed thirty thousand dollars under this contract. And so it's something that you may want to consider in the resolution. If it helps make it a little bit more formalized, so you have a little more control and understanding of what's actually going on.
In our ordinances, we have limitations like that.
Yep.
In general.
Okay.
Our attorney in reviewing this contract, or this agreement, I should say, and preparing the resolution for us, didn't feel that that was necessary.
Okay.
But thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Mike?
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the general services agreement, C-2A-E.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike Connell, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for coming. I hope the air conditioning's working in the yard.
I got windows. Thank you.
Moving on then, we have next on our agenda, possible adoption of ordinance amendment 377, chapter, section 1060 and 284. Larry, would you like to?
Sure. This is just the follow-up to the discussion where we talked previously about the fact that the library within the city of Perry is part of the district library and not the Edna Benton Library. So this basically repeals a couple of ordinances that we've had on the books that are basically out of date. Any comments, questions? I move ordinance number 377, chapter, section 1060 and 284, which will be repealed and reads as follows, be adopted. The city of Perry ordains Perry City Code, chapter 1060 and chapter 284, hereby repealed. This repeal ordinance is effective thirty days after publication.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion? Please signify by saying aye. Yes, and those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on then to, oh, the possible adoption of resolution for a commitment to an M.D.A. grant. And we'll have Kevin come up in case you have any questions about that.
This is pretty standard procedure for an M.D.A. grant. For the city to adopt the resolution, this basically says then that that we are serious about doing a paving project and the council is aware of the cost. And we've already filed the first part of the application. So when we get the resolution, we'll be able to complete the application. And then we get in line to see if we qualify for any funding. I know John has done it in the past. I believe the past couple of years, we've passed the same resolution that just allows us to be in line for M.D.A. funding for roads. So, pretty standard stuff.
Same thing, look in the past, we don't get the grant, we don't do the project, basically.
Correct. The money stays where it's at and we do one street instead of three.
And we've got the city's portion baked into our budget.
Correct.
Assuming we get the grant.
Yes, like I said, if we, if we don't get the grant, then we're able to do one street. If we do get the grant, I think I'd list the two on there for this time around so we can double our money, essentially.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the city of Perry is applying for a total of seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and five fifty in funding through M.D.A. from the Transportation Economic Development Category B program to construct resurfacing on West Third Street from Main Street to William Street, totaling thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. And resurfacing on East First Street from Main Street through Madison Street intersection, totaling forty-one thousand, seventy-five dollars, fifty cents. Whereas M.D.A. requires a formal commitment from the public agency that will be receiving these funds and will be implementing and maintaining these infrastructure projects. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city has authorized Kevin Tyler, Superintendent of Public Works, to act as agent on behalf of the city to request Transportation Economic Development Fund Category B program funding, to act as applicant's agent during the project development, and to sign a project agreement upon receipt of funding award. So I guess, be it further resolved that the city confesses to the existence of, and commits to, providing at least thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and two seventy-five toward the construction costs of the projects and all costs for design, permit fees, administration costs, and cost overruns. Be it further resolved that the city commits to owing, operating, funding, and implementing a maintenance program over the design life of the facilities constructed with Transportation Economic Development Fund Category B program funding carry.
Second. Steve seconded.
Steve got it. I think Steve got it. He was just a little early, but we'll take this. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is possible approval of the resolution that's in your packet. It's titled, Resolution to Pay. And this is a part of our discussion from last meeting when we talked about Shirley not being able to use her vacation time because of the additional responsibilities she'd taken on during Devon's illness absence. And so Justin has drafted this resolution for us in order to pay Shirley forty hours of vacation time so that it doesn't expire when her anniversary date comes around this month.
I move to authorize Pam to Shirley Smith forty hours on use of vacation time with July twenty, twenty twenty-three payroll.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is additional discussion regarding the Police Committee funding, which is the committee who's trying to come up with ways to get more money into our general fund and found that it was possible, or is possible, for the city to use special assessment funds to pay all or a portion of the police budget so that it doesn't come out of our general fund. So we, we had a discussion on this last meeting. And there were some questions about how that would be done as far as the portion of the taxes that it comes out of. And Larry mentioned that Megan had prepared this example of how our tax bills are divided up. And so we'll have to pass those down so that everybody gets a copy of that. Then she also copied just a random tax bill, taking out names and numbers and things so that you can't see whose this is. That is a summer and winter bill. So I'll just pass those on and you can take one of each of those. And again, this is for nothing more than just information. And since Megan's here, if you have questions about that, she's here to happily explain any of that. Here's another summer. And then here's winter. Winter, winter, winter. Messing these up. Have you guys all got a summer and a winter?
No, we got two winters.
You got two winters? Give me a winter, Megan.
You got, you got a summer and a winter. I have two winters.
A summer, I'll take the winter and we'll pass it down there. There's a summer. Okay, so you'll see the description on the right-hand side of each of these bills showing what is being paid in that tax bill on that page. Senior Services on the winter now. Senior Services, Chiwasi, MCF, what's that, Megan?
Medicare Facility.
Medicare Facility. MSU Extension, Veterans, PA two fourteen, Veteran Services, School Operating, School Death, Sinking Fund, S-R-E-S-D.
Chiwasi Regional Education Service District.
Okay.
And then, so then the next one is for, same thing, but Special Ed Services.
Yeah.
And the final one is the Career Technical Education Millage, which was passed last summer.
Okay. And then the Community District Library, and then CSU and LGR?
It's a drain assessment.
Oh.
Most properties in the city have a small amount from that drain. This may have, twenty twenty-two may have been the last year for the drain assessment. I won't know until tech goes out in winter, if there's a, another portion remaining for a final year.
So on this winter bill, the total was eight fifty-two sixty-two. The amounts in that far right-hand column were, if you total those up, all for the things that are listed there. The city doesn't get to keep much.
We get eight dollars and forty-four cents of that bill.
We get eight dollars and forty-four cents of that eight hundred dollar bill. And then the summer bill, same kind of thing, same way it's set up. You'll see the breakdown for SET, what's that?
State Education Tax.
Okay.
State.
Okay, then County Operating, School Operating, City Operating, SADA, School Death, School Sinking Fund, Parks, and Ambulance. And because of the way that the increase was done, we've got two on there.
One percent each time.
Yeah. So that total bill, one thousand, eight forty-eight twenty-five, how much of that does the city actually get?
Operating is to keep seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Parks will get six dollars and sixteen cents. So you can round what city has to keep up to probably eight hundred because we keep the administration fee on the bottom of eight hundred and twenty-nine.
So about a thousand goes to other stuff and we get about. So just, just so you know, and then, and she did a great job on this, showing how it all divides up. But I just thought there was enough confusion last time about how that happens, that it would be worth going over. And since she's here, if you have questions, please feel free to talk to her about that.
I have one.
Yep.
It says, SESA Millage, one point eight one, one point one eight zero eight. I thought SESA, this fire's different.
The, the fire?
SESA is, it was sixty-five. I know we're gonna try to raise it, but, so that's not, that's not correct then, is it?
So the ambulance, the ambulance assessment goes on your summer bill. Well, this year, it's traditionally on the summer bill. It's the seventy-one fifty on the summer bill. That's the first increase that we could do without going to a public hearing. The SESA, and the SESA you see on the winter bill is the fire portion of your funding.
It used to say fire, didn't it?
Uh, maybe. In my tag, it's only got SESA. My long tenure.
I just, it's confused me because it's like, wait, because I swear, not this year, but a couple of years, maybe last year, I looked and it said fire.
And the county may have changed. I know the county changed what they call some of the other services. So that might have been a county-wide change. So you'll notice on the summer bill, it says ambulance and the millage rate is zero. That's because it's a flat fee assessment. Whereas on your winter bill, where you see SESA, there is a millage rate.
Right.
Because it's.
Because that's fire. That's, that's what confused me. Because SESA is not a millage percentage. Weird how they did it, but, uh, thank you.
The committee's recommendation, when we came back a couple of weeks ago, was for a special assessment of one ninety?
One ninety-nine.
One ninety-nine a, a year per household. And that would cover a portion of the police budget. Doesn't add anything to the police budget. Police budget's absolutely the same as it was accrued for this budget year. But it takes the payment to cover that portion from the special assessment and leaves that much in the general fund. And we couldn't really find any other way that we could get money of a significant amount into our general fund. You could have an election to raise the millage rate, but as soon as you raise it, it starts backing down again under the headly override. So in five years, we'd be back to square one. And I recognize and I sympathize. Because I'm not rich either. I'm not. But without getting more money into our general fund, the city's gonna be in a dire situation in a couple of years. We've got to get money in there. So if people have, council has a way to do that, please let us know. But this was a way, this is a way that it can happen. And it would be approximately a hundred and ninety. In order, Megan, correct me, I forget how you said it to me. But if we do less than that, we're really not getting anywhere. We're just holding even.
I think at that rate, you were, I wish I had a specialty there. We talked about equity. We gotta talk about a little more.
Plus seven.
Maybe thirty, thirty or fifty. I think it was.
At a hundred and fifty, you were plus thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, eighty-seven cents. At one ninety, forty-eight, you're plus seven, seven thousand, seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and twelve, eighty-seven cents. So you're still at plus a hundred and fifty dollars. And your forty dollars less that were going, trying to get a fee from the city, residents from, we need to, ambulance needs to go up by forty dollars or more. And, you know, just things going, 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 going.
Yes, and they are, they are. There's absolutely no argument there.
I don't.
Everything's going up.
Has, did, I called our county commissioner a day before he was going out of town and asked him why the county hasn't given us any, a raise of money that gives back or what we can keep. So did anyone else do that? Did we look into that before we just want to raise an assessment? Then maybe the last straw, but I think, I don't think we've exhausted all our options before we go to that.
I don't understand what you're saying by the county giving us money back.
We pay the county, the county lets us keep, quote unquote, our money.
They don't, they don't let us keep anything, no.
Right, well, they give it back, however you want to say it, right?
So we, we collect on behalf of all the entities on the bill.
Given to them.
And then we disperse it.
Correct.
Yep, nothing comes back.
But we keep that little bit, so maybe we should look at it, and why, why is our rate so much? Why do we collect so much?
Because their millage rates are started higher and have rolled back to where they are now, is, is my, my understanding, is we can't control what was approved countywide millage rates.
No, we, no, we can't, we can't control people voting in school millages and everything else either. So I just, it's just kidding.
I mean, there's no doubt about the fact that expenses are going up and up and up. And it's um sad that the cost of living went up nine and a half percent last year. I wish it didn't, but it did. And I, I wish there was another way to do this that wouldn't increase the amount that city residents had to pay, but recognizing that, we cannot expect more and pay less. And that's what's been happening. The millage rates have gone down, not every year and not by much, but your portion that went to the city might have gone down by $10 one year, might have gone up by $5 the year before, down by 7 the year before, so, but our costs are not doing that. Our costs are going this way and our income from taxes is doing that. So I mean, we're just, we're not keeping up, folks. And if, if each of us could pay $20 a month, $15 a month, which is that total of $150 to $200, $190, whatever we settle on, we are gonna be ahead of the game. We're gonna have money in the general fund. One of the next things we're gonna talk about here is whether we can do something with our city siren. There are other projects we've talked about, sidewalks, lights at the intersection. We don't even have money enough in our general fund to apply for a matching grant for money to do that stuff. So we don't have enough extra money in there to pay a matching amount. So somehow, heaven forbid, there'd be an emergency we'd have to cover, but somehow we need to get money in the general fund. And that, that's the purpose of this.
I understand the purpose and I understand it's tight, but did we, have we done everything? Have we cut, you were putting up an application or ad for a full-time officer, I thought we weren't doing that. I thought I asked that quite a long time ago.
We haven't been doing that.
I thought I asked that the last meeting.
That was agreed to at the Budget Committee Workshop Meeting. And it's in the budget.
So maybe we should take it out of the budget since we can't afford that budget.
I don't think we should. We have had issues in the city where we have needed our police officers and you want to take them away.
Where, what, our statistics don't show it, don't back it up, I'm sorry.
I just, just the other day, I saw down by the corner where the light is, I saw a car going the wrong way down the street. And the first thing I said is, we cannot lose our police.
Once the police officer stopped the guy from going the wrong way? No, so it didn't matter, you have one set on every corner, you're not gonna get everything. We don't, this, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's just an example, but things go on. These things go on.
Bob, you're not here during the day.
No, I don't, I'm not.
No, I know, I know, but I am, and I'm probably a little more aware of things that go on that I'm not gonna say on camera. I'd be happy to have a private conversation with you or you can meet with cheap box. We need our full police force.
But we want, we don't, and no one has proven to me, I'm sorry.
I didn't say why, don't change my words.
You want, you want a full-time...
I said need and we need.
That's your opinion and we need it. The statistics don't show it. I'm sorry they don't. File has to turn in, statistics to the FBI, and that's not there. We don't have the crime rate that is warranted for this size of city to have five police officers and three or four per time. I'm sorry, that's my opinion, I don't think this is, I don't think we've exhausted the effort before we start going to people for more fees.
Will the, the rest of council respond to your claims?
I personally think we'll remiss if we don't try to utilize this tool. At the same time, we can continue to look for cost savings opportunities. We did that when we went through the budget, you know, in detail, we went line by line through the budget and tried to, you know, we've made some decisions in here about how we were gonna handle healthcare costs, which are one of those things continue to go up. We said we want, we don't want to start cutting healthcare opportunities for our employees. And we made those conscious decisions in here. I personally think we'll remiss if we don't attempt to move forward to utilize this tool for our general fund in total, that happens to be under the umbrella of, you know, special services, but it's not necessarily just Kyle's police force, that's my opinion.
I feel like we have to start somewhere.
Yes, absolutely.
We cannot let it go on where our budget just drop, 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 we can't let it go on. We have to start with something.
Start the lowest amount that you can, the lowest absolute bare minimum you can instead of going to the middle side.
If, if we did that, and, and that's what I was thinking too, but I don't want to be in the same situation that CISA is in. I don't want to get in that same situation.
At least, at least the city has been somewhat forth-thinking, forward-thinking. Okay, and I'm not necessarily saying that this is not an end result, this may have to happen. I'm saying we're pushing it too fast. I don't think we have looked at, and I don't think, I'm sorry, that we have, we need to have the police force that we have.
And that's your opinion?
Absolutely. Absolutely my opinion, I'm sorry, it hasn't proven to me. You can prove it to me, and if we had the money, it would be not a question, no problem. Done deal.
What's it take to prove it to you?
Statistics. Do we have the crime rate? We have break-ins, we have auto thefts, we have assaults, we have murders, we have rapes, any of that stuff. We don't have those in this little city. So if we have the statistics...
That's how you get yourself in trouble, saying that, that you don't have it in the little city, yes.
Is it how you get in trouble?
No, you, there's no, it's... Just assuming crime isn't there because you don't see it.
I didn't say that, I didn't say that, no, I did not.
Maybe partially because of our police force is low.
Perhaps.
That...
But is there, can, can, look, we don't have, there isn't endless pockets here. This is, our assessed values of our houses are very low. So the people who moved in here and paid a higher assessment have a higher burden. So, and there's nothing you can do about that. And I'm not saying you should go reassess people's houses because now we need this money, that's not fair either. But I don't think we have exhausted the effort. I think it was real easy to say, oh, now we can do this, let's just do it. I really do, I'm sorry.
No, it wasn't, Bob, it wasn't easy at all. You weren't in the committee meetings that we had.
No, I wasn't.
We were not, and you haven't been. And so for you to say, have we really looked at everything? Yes, we have looked at everything that came to our awareness. Now, we're not city managers, we're not college educated in how to run a city, but we did look at what other options do we have. But I think you do have a point that is a positive one. And perhaps we shouldn't go to the highest number right now, although I don't really think 190 is all that high compared to what it puts into the general fund. But this city and the council and the treasurer and everybody who works here has really looked at their budget. Every year I, that I've, and I've only been here three years, but every year I saw the department heads' budgets come in and they would have things on there that they would like to have and they got scratched every single year. They were taken back out. And the opportunity last year, because insurance did go so high, was discussed. Do we change what insurance we pay? Well, we did at least change the options for employees to have this company or that company, this type of coverage or that. But if we take that away, and I think it was you that said, if we take that away, then we're gonna have to pay it more to compensate.
You have to pay for it sooner or later. So why is, why, I don't understand, and I've heard this, it's not just here. I hear it on the radio, I listen to a lot of radio.
Yeah.
When I drive a lot, I drive around a lot. It's always healthcare, first thing people want to cut. Why is that? Why do we always go to that? Why can't we look at across the board? I'm, I'm sorry, Kyle, I misunderstood, the last time we had this, the last meeting, he said he wasn't adding a police officer. I thought then that took it off because we were $34,000 over budget when we passed the budget. And I, I, I knew that. But the only reason we're only 34 is because we spent ARPA money. So without ARPA money, we're $75,000 or $80,000 over budget. So how close am I with that number?
I'm trying to vote right now, but we do have, the last ARPA money is $55,000 this year, so without that $55,000, that's on a greater...
I'm close, I'm not way off, yeah. That's all. We have, we have an obligation to the citizens of this city to make sure that we have exhausted every opportunity. Yes, I was not in committee meetings, but I'm sorry, I feel like this is being pushed.
It's not, and this is a discussion. This is a discussion.
Yeah, it's not something we're voting on right now, this is why we're discussing it, is somebody's got a better idea.
The committee is convinced that this is the right way to do it, the mayor is convinced to do right, to do this. Correct?
Did anybody else in here hear me say I'm absolutely convinced?
Am I, am I not listening to my audience or my people here with me that that's your feeling? Right? You said yes, we need it, the mayor said we have to have a mic to suggest it's the best way to do it.
I'm not on the committee.
I said we'll remiss if we don't at least pursue it. I haven't seen a better option come forward.
This is, this is me, and I've been thinking about it since the discussion came up last meeting. I don't know where else, I don't know what else to do, I don't have any other ideas. I've watched our department heads for years cut, every year their, their budget goes down. And I've also watched us not be able to give decent raises to our people. And that, that kills me, that they don't get, for all the work and the good work that they do, we can't do that for them. I don't, I don't know what else we cut. If somebody has a better idea, I'm open.
I think we're all open.
I think you all are, yeah.
I am not saying we have to do this, I'm saying we have to do something.
And I'm not, I don't have a lot of faith that the county's gonna help us. I'm sorry.
No, there probably isn't, I, all I was trying to do is beat the bushes. The next, the next thing you're gonna talk about, I beat the bushes about that too. Because it doesn't hurt anything to call and make phone calls and ask. Right? I'm sorry, but if you want to talk to me privately at some time and convince me that we need five officers, I'd be glad to talk to you about it. I just don't see it. And I'm just a layman. I don't have college education in city management or anything for that matter. So...
I, I have strong concerns, just to address that, the police issue once more. I have strong concerns about what would happen if we went to fewer police officers because we are so far from where the county office is.
And so close to 69.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, we have M52, I69 right here. We have potential for a railroad terrible accident with noxious fumes and who knows what. I mean, our potential for bad stuff's pretty high, thank the good Lord that we've not had much of that. But we have had citizens who've needed help immediately and we have had officers here to help them immediately, not a half hour later. So I, that's my concern about that. We can certainly continue to discuss this as we should. So surely if you would just put this on our agenda again, additional discussion regarding if you would phrase it, building to the general fund. Kyle, did you have any else you wanted to say? I'm sorry, I, you came up here and I ignored you.
I didn't have anything to say, I was just available to answer your questions.
Thank you. So moving on in our agenda to discussion tornado siren. Bob, do you want to lead that, since you did so much work on it?
Not that much, we're having two phones, three phones though. Tyler, Rep, the goal, and our Senator Singh, and then of course I asked Tom Emery about it too. Both, the goals office said they will look into it, get back, I mean, that was before the holidays, so I'm gonna give them a perfect call next week. And Singh called me back and said that don't look into it. Because Michigan has quite a bit of money surplus and it seems like they're trying to give it away to people, so...
We applied under the legislative grant, last funding, was it last funding or the funding before, for this particular thing? And we didn't get it.
No, but sometimes the squeaky wheel gets reversed.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it doesn't hurt.
Just letting people know, we did try.
I, I know, I know you have, I'm not saying no one's done anything and if I implied that, I'm sorry. But I think, I would encourage every council member calling the rap and, and beat the bushes. The more people call and beat the bushes, maybe more dollars will fall out of those bushes. So I, you know, again, I hear it all the time, they give the money away, they just gave money to city of Dearborn to build a new fire station, so...
You did, I think I'll get copies of the updates that Kevin got for us for the estimated cost, so you have that? And so council, I just need to understand, your pleasure, do you want to just move this to no action taken? Or just move it for additional discussion until Bob hears from his push meeting?
I have a question, I don't know, Kyle, if you can answer this or if we can find out. And we put a push on some number of months ago, relative to getting people to sign up for the Smart 911 or RAMP activity.
Yeah.
Is there any way of finding out what percentage of the, not at an individual level, but how successful that has been? I know it's still on our website, but, you know, is it 10% of the people that have signed up, 50%?
I will say that there was enough success to switch platforms completely. So we're going away from Smart 911 and RAVE. And we're going to a new company platform software called Everbridge. And they are nationwide and the county has already approved to, to purchase this and sign on with it. I think, is Anam County on it? It, it's a fantastic system.
It is.
It's very user-friendly. I'll have my own access, I can create whatever we need for our own boil notices or whatever needs we have. And we can actually geofence the city to capture, and it actually has technology built into capturing any kind of contact information, even with cell phones that people have in the city, which the other system didn't have. It only had what you put in it and it was only relevant, it was only good for six months unless you re-upped it. So this new system, from what I understand, is what a lot of places are moving to and with great success.
What is the name of that again?
Everbridge.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not even adverse to the idea of a siren, if you read through this, the company says it's for outdoor warning. So it's, it clearly is not gonna do any good for the people who are in the houses. We hope, if you're right next to it, you may hear, but I think there's enough new technology that if we get a grant and install it, but I don't know that I'm in favor of spending a ton of money, I'd rather put another push in on with Everbridge now when it becomes available. We try to get a high percentage of residents and business is signed up for something that's as close as their phone, whether they're inside, outside, in their car, et cetera.
Yep. I do think it is worth noting also that the county is moving forward with their side of the tornado project upgrade to allow for automatic triggering of the sirens. And that's actually not even gonna be it, from the last conversation that I was a part of, dispatch isn't even gonna be a part of that. They're gonna host the control center for that, but it's actually gonna be automated through the weather service. So if there's any kind of alert that comes in the path of that storm, it's gonna automatically trigger these sirens if we're a part of this upgraded system. The new siren, West Shore would not put in a siren that's antiquated enough that wouldn't allow for that signal to be triggered. There was a rumor that that project died and it was stalled because our tower wasn't available due to the cost. They did find another tower option and they're proceeding with that. Lots of township actually just donated property for, that might be a different project. Lots of township actually just donated property for, that might be a different project. It's moving forward. It's a 20-foot antenna with a wire that comes down and plugs in, and they're moving forward with it. So it hasn't stalled, it hasn't died, it is proceeding, and this project that we're talking about in the city would upgrade our system to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions regarding the emergency notification system? Shall we put on the agenda again, maybe the first meeting of August when Kyle will be here, just to learn how things are coming?
This is something the city has looked at for over 20 years.
Oh, yeah.
In the 90s, we needed another siren. And the city did a study then.
I, I'm not a contract person, but I felt like it was quite one-sided.
Oh, yeah.
For them.
There's nobody else in the state that does it.
Oh.
No one. They have a monopoly.
Say no more.
They pretty much have a monopoly nationwide, to be honest with you. The fact that they're even in Michigan is a big deal because one of the conversations we had recently with the owner, he was down in like bikinis with this stuff. And they're right out of Michigan, they're out of Grand Rapids area, so, yeah. They're a big deal. We got them close. We can actually call them and talk to the owner. That's a big deal, but they're spread thin and spread wide.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to another siren, but I think we, in parallel with that, need to move forward with this Everbridge for the reasons I said earlier, that not everybody's going to hear the siren, even sort of another one in.
When I contacted the company to get the updated flow, I asked them if they knew of any funding that may have been available or grants that other companies were using to purchase such equipment, and they were unaware of anything offhand. He said he was going to look into some things and give back to me, but it wasn't sounding very promising. So if they're not receiving funds from grants and stuff like that, the chances of us finding something that he doesn't know about are probably increased. But I did, did a little poking around during that email chain, so I'm doing what I can to help too.
So let's have further discussion regarding our emergency services alerts, and maybe Kyle can update us a little more on Everbridge, and we could do another big push for people to sign up for that type of service if it's available.
We have a 911 board meeting a week from today, so I may be able to garner more information there.
Great, thank you. Any, anything else that you want Kyle to check on? Anybody? You all good with that? Okay. Moving on then, passable first reading of zoning amendment 381, Larry, you want to touch that?
Okay. We've got two zoning amendments on the agenda tonight, and actually there's another part that hopefully we'll have on our next agenda for a first reading. Basically, we've gone through in a number of our ordinance committee meetings and had extensive discussion with regard to what we've got on the books relative to pets, numbers of pets, et cetera, within the, within the city. And basically, what we've got in front of us tonight are some clarification of definitions around kennels and around definition of pets. And I'll do a little comparison as we go forward. The one on kennels basically just clarifies the number of dogs before you have to have a kennel license, and also does, our current ordinance includes cats. None of us could find any place that there are cat kennels around, so we elected to remove that. And then under the, the second one on pets, I'll cover that in more detail when we get there in terms of we've clarified what constitutes pets within the city. Comments, questions? I move that zoning ordinance amendment 381, section 2.12 regarding kennels, which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains. Perry City Code, section 2.12, cave kennel is amended as follows. Section 2.12 kennel. Any lot or premises on which more than four dogs, six months of age or older, are kept temporarily or permanently for the purpose of breeding, breeding, being pets, or for sale.
Second.
Your motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
And moving on to the second amendment, I'll read through it and then I can point out afterwards what previously either has been added or deleted in terms of our proposed definition. I move that zoning ordinance amendment 381, section 2.12 regarding pets, which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains. Perry City Code, section 2.17p for pets, is amended as follows. Section 2.12p for pets. Domesticated animals kept for pleasure and not for utility. A list of pets include the following: dogs, cats, pot-bellied pigs, and rabbits. Pets that do not include, excuse me, pets do not include standards chickens of any kind or breed, poultry, goats, horses, miniature horses, or any other animals commonly raised in animal husbandry.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Basically, we came very clear in terms of the issue around chickens within the city. We had ambiguity in our prior ordinance relative to certain kinds of chickens were allowed.
Any other business that may come before council at this time? Hearing none, any public comment?
Yeah, can I ask a question?
You may.
Okay, okay. About the chickens, is there certain kinds of chickens you can have in town or not?
No, no kind of chickens.
No chickens within, if you're in a residential area. If you're an agricultural area.
Okay, because my neighbor has six.
Our ordinance enforcement officer, this hasn't been approved yet, first reading.
Okay.
But once approved, the ordinance enforcement officer will begin a process of trying to go through, identify those places that aren't in compliance, and work with those residents to, may take some time, but to try and move toward no chickens within residential parts of the city.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you, Deanna. Any council discussion or observation anyone would like to make? Agenda items for our next meeting, I think we've identified a couple of them. Another one is that our deputy clerk, Shirley Smith, is willing to accept appointment to city clerk position. I'd like to put discussion on that topic on the agenda for our next meeting. We'll also need to appoint a new rep to SADA. Devin was our rep to that committee, so, that board, so we will need someone who's interested in SADA and being a part of that organization to step up, to take her place. And just a little discussion about a tree possibly, or a bench in honor of Devin, if people are interested in doing that type of planting or placing a bench with appropriate signage to say it's in honor of Devin. Megan and I and Kyle talked about this a little bit today, and we thought there was some way that the city funds could be used for that, but there's also, you know, if people wanted to make a donation toward that. What were your thoughts on that, Megan?
It's a big place and a public space for public use, so we can use public funds to do it.
That's right. It would benefit everyone in the city because it would be in addition to the property, so city funds could be used for that. We could take up the collection to put the sign there because that would be something. But no decision's been made. It's not in stone by any means. Just give it some more thought, and at our next meeting, maybe we could just have a little discussion again, and if we do want to take up a collection for that, we could do that.
Does she have a favorite tree?
I don't...
Anybody might know?
Shirley, Shirley mentioned a flowering pear. She always liked those, the white ones along Main Street.
Can't plant them there, basically.
I'm sorry.
Can't plant them there, basically.
Oh, they are.
They're going to ban them in Ohio, they're going to ban them in Michigan, so.
Oh.
She like white flowers?
Maybe you could come up with some recommendations for that.
That's why I'm asking.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
If you can find out if there's a favorite color flower or a tree that she may have liked other than the flowering pear.
I think she just liked flowers in general. I never heard her say, yeah, she liked sunflowers, but that's not a tree.
Not a tree.
At least not like to anyway. So why don't, why don't you give us some research?
I have an idea.
Thank you.
I'll give you some ideas.
We do have on our next agenda the Perry Pride Award, and I think, Bob, it's your...
Yep, I drove around today, couple minutes or a minute, few addresses, so I'll have that.
Okay.
Shirley, probably Monday, you say somewhere in there, next week before, before the end of the week for sure.
Anything else for our next agenda, anybody?
We'll just have the other piece of the pet discussion, if we get that back from Justin.
I'm just looking at my notes here so I don't miss something. I think that was everything. Megan, Shirley and I are going to review the job descriptions for city clerk, treasurer, and try to make sure that the revisions that have taken place are actually in paper so that as we talk about how we're going to make this change. But we haven't had a chance to do it yet, so we will. But Shirley's been doing a great job.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
She's put in extra time, but she's also been very task-oriented. She gets things done, and she's not afraid to ask questions. She talks with Megan about stuff, the two of them will discuss it together. She's, you know, contacts Justin if need be, and he's been extremely helpful, so. Thank you, Shirley, for that. Thank you, Megan, for all the extra stuff you've been doing. So now at the 18:00 time, this meeting is adjourned.